All please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll mark the meeting open at 7:02 PM. And we will start with public comments. Is there any public comments?
Jamie Brennan, 124 Bunge Road, Seymour, Connecticut. I rise tonight to address two issues of concern to me. Hopefully, you'll bring them up in your discussion of item number 10 as they both pertain to your POCD 2016 document. The first is catch basins, concerned with why they haven't been cleaned yet, when they will be cleaned. I've been to Public Works a few weeks ago. They told me they were gonna have to check with Town Hall as to when it was gonna be done. Usually, we do that in the spring. And I was there last week, and I spoke with a person, and they told me that they don't know when it's gonna be done. I don't know if he's a foreman or the director, what his title is, says, but he didn't know what Town Hall was waiting for. But anyways, in your POCD, under the section, POCD summary, if you read only one thing, read this, beginning on page five, under conservation strategies. We have natural resources, and in that POCD, it discusses continuation of the protection of groundwater and surface waters. Now, improper maintenance of catch basins clearly is in conflict with that as we're putting the road sediment and the associated pollutants. All of them end up directly in a water course or in a wetlands area. So again, hopefully, some bringing that up. When are we gonna do that? I know we were gonna buy a vacuum truck this year. It was in the budget, but that money was transferred. So maybe there's no money. I don't know. The second issue is they identify in conservation strategies in that POCD, under the same section, I believe it's number six, for encouragement of open space strategy. It says to enlighten, educate the public as to their eligibility for PA 490 status. As a person who has PA 490 status, I would encourage you to educate the town, how it's properly implemented, prior to educating people in the green room. In 2011, I owned farm PA 490 property. 2011, I came before the board. There's two of you that were here. Anne Marie actually came out and looked at the place where my property was incorrectly declassified, and Board of Assessment Appeals returned that, but did nothing on my house value, saying had to give something to the guy upstairs. I don't know who the guy upstairs is. But again, this year, in the last revow, the town of Seymour declassified half of it. PA 490 stipulates that the intent is, it's a unit. So again, the town is contrary to the 490 statutes. It had always been my position that the town was giving with one hand and taking with the other as they were raising the appraisal price on my dwelling. Upon the completion of assessment of appeal this year and a judicial assessment appeal hearing, the farm classification had been returned, and the appraised value of my dwelling had been lowered by some $51,000. According to my documentation, which is an appraisal and communication with local realtors, of which I'm sure this board knows them all, it's still overappraised by $30,000. But I figured a little bit of something's better than a whole lot of nothing. So again, before we start talking about we're gonna educate people, you know, we need to educate the town. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Mr. Coolas.
Steve Coolas, 12th Bank Street. I use my business address because I rise to express growing frustration and concern over the building project on Columbus Street. Back in January of this year, I was invited as a business owner for an informational meeting. Several things were told to us after long and sometimes heated discussion with other members of the public about the appropriateness of the building project going forward. We were then informed to file, roads would only be closed on Mondays and Tuesdays. The developer closes them as he wishes. They were closed a week ago Thursday, a week ago Friday, and last Thursday, and maybe last Friday, my memory fails. We were told that workers would not be allowed to park on Bank Street or Columbus Street. I can tell you that I witnessed a secretary from Mr. Potash's office going out and chasing one of the workers away after he had left his car there so long that our parking enforcement officer gave him a ticket. He didn't care. He had parked in front of my office the day before and received another ticket. He didn't care. My wife, who also works with me, witnesses, witnessed the owners of Tewa Tracy chasing again, workers from that site, away from the front of their building. It seems as time has gone on, either the subcontractor or the general contractor has taken an inch and is now seeking to take a mile. I won't go into the personal frustration I have over the amount of dust and debris that lands in my parking lot. We have spent, my wife and I personally, close to $100 cleaning her cars. And I've let my car go. There's no containment of dust or debris. Very concerning. Most troubling though is the closing of the roads at the convenience of the contractor. We were told we would get 24-hour notice at that meeting of any road closures. I have not received one. We're supposed to go out on code red. Other things we were told, we would get a monthly update. I haven't invited to any meetings since January, nor have I received any monthly updates. Very troubling. I know construction may proceed slowly. There may not be a need for an update. But now we're almost 10 months since the initial meeting. Winter is upon us. I would like to know. I have very many concerns about how the roads are gonna work in the winter with snow on the ground. No one has updated us. It has become frustrating. But more troubling is the lackadaisical attitude of the owners, contractors, and subcontractors. There are rules set down. They're ignored. And the only person out there is our parking enforcement officer. His sole remedy is giving tickets, and he does. And I asked you to talk to him about how he's had personal conversations. His instructions have been ignored. He even writes on the tickets, park only in the trestle. Ah. No one cares. I urged someone to reach out to this contractor and restore the promises he made in January. It's now almost 10 months, and I think it's only gonna get worse.
Thank you, Steve. Sorry, I was just making notes. Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Hearing no other public comment. We'll close public comment. Come on, Mr. Flynn. I mean, we'll have it at the end as well, so.
Okay, very good. Okay, I'd just like to make a statement about defense posts or guardrails on Humphrey Street. They are in a bad state of repair. I just figured you could notify the Public Works Department on it. Okay.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Rory, can you make that note? Okay, any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Hearing no other public comment. We'll close public comment. Excuse me, move on to item number four, approval minutes from the September 6, 2016 regular meeting. Have a motion to do so. Motion by Nicole, seconded by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes 5-0-1, and please note Karen's abstention. Item number five, First Selectment Report. Just a quick report tonight. With the potential storm coming next weekend, we have started our preparation process. Fire, police, ambulances, and Public Works have all started to work through their pre-storm checklists. The EOC is up and running and ready to go. We'll continue to monitor the storm progress and provide updates throughout the week to not only the public, but the board as well. Our unaudited surplus sits at roughly $520,000. This number comes in because we had higher-than-expected revenue, and our expenses were lower than budgeted for fiscal year 2016. The auditors are here now, so we expect to have final audited numbers at some point by the end of the year. Want to thank specifically Al, Len, and Stefan, who's not with us tonight, for helping me push the car. Also, Public Works for their assistance. Seymour ambulance chief Kyle Kelly, Seymour fire chief Mike Lombardi, deputy police chief Paul Sikowski, Alex Danke, Jimmy Duda, who is a Seymour police officer, and John Healy, who works for William Blair, for also assisting in the push. Al claims that he did the vast majority of the work. The rest of us were just kinda there for the ride. We raised a little bit over $14,500, which we gave a giant check to Mrs. Deming, which she was quite happy about. So, you know, kudos goes to everybody who assisted with that. But I also want to thank all the sponsors, Mrs. Deming and her team, for putting on the event that they did. We had 2,400 runners representing 105 towns across Connecticut, 10 different states, but most importantly, there were 128 cancer survivors, which was certainly a great thing. So certainly a great event, shows a lot of pride in our community, and certainly something that I'm very proud of. So that closes the First Selectment Report. That will move on to item number six, discussion, take possible action regarding awarding of bid for steep sidewalk phase number five. So in your package, you have a letter from Jim Galligan. Says, Dear Mr. Miller, NAFIS Young Engineers Incorporated opened bids for the above referenced project on September 5, 2016. 5th, excuse me, September 15, thank you, 2016. The original low bid by G Pickens Sons Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $219,250. State grant amount for this project is $200,000. NAFIS and Young Engineers has reduced the size of the project down to a value of $200,000. Therefore, NAFIS and Young Engineers Incorporated recommends that the Seymour Board of Selectment approve the award for the Main Street investment, excuse me, for the steep Phase 5 sidewalk project, so please correct that. Sidewalk improvements to G Pickens Sons Construction Company in the amount of $200,000. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, James H. Galligan of NAFIS and Young. So the second page attached to what Jim presented to us, you can see the information on the three different bid, three different bids, excuse me. And Jim has reduced those accordingly. This work will be done in the Garden City area. It's a complete work that was started in that area last year. So with this, with that, I'll entertain a motion to award the Seymour sidewalk Phase 5 steep bid to J Pickens Sons Construction Company Incorporated in an amount not to go above $200,000. Motion by Anne Marie, seconded by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, discussion, take possible action regarding awarding bid for the LED streetlight conversion project. I believe we are nearing a conclusion. We have Tony and Rory here tonight to make a little presentation to us, and then we'll go from there. So I don't know who's going to speak. Rory Burke, all right.
Hello. In your package, there are
Bye, Steve.
two spreadsheets. The last time I gave you guys an update, we had been made aware that Eversource is now doing LED streetlight conversion projects. So there's one that should say, I don't have it in front of me. It's a larger one. That's the one. It's a municipal versus utility-owned rate comparison. For the lights. And so this is basically rate 116 that you see there is when the utility owns the fixtures. Rate 117 is when the town does. Eversource, when we first started this process, gave us a full inventory of streetlights. So I was able to make actual savings calculations for the streetlights we have because theoretically, if Eversource does the conversion to LED versus us doing it, the energy savings should be relatively similar. So it comes down to rate savings. And so what this spreadsheet shows is that if we just purchased the streetlights from Eversource that we have right now and made no conversion, we'd save $88,000. If we purchased them and converted them, we don't know what type of fixtures they would use, so I just made the calculation as if it were all 1,100 streetlights, all the same fixture, just, you know, theoretically. So the bare minimum we would save in that situation is $103,000. So it's $15,000 a year in additional savings if we purchased this. So I, no, that's not right.
What's $15,000 difference versus just purchasing the light as is with the rate change?
Because they're saving more than that for a year, right?
This took me about four hours to get it all straight in my head. All right, yeah, so I mean, basically then
Might be a little punch drunk at this point. Been grinding the numbers for weeks.
Yeah, so if you're considering over the duration of, you know, the lifespan of the fixtures, we're going to save so much more money if we purchase the fixtures ourselves versus have Eversource do it. Then the rate actually goes up for utility-owned LED fixtures versus what we pay now. Presumably, the fixtures are more expensive, so the maintenance and replacement costs are factored in. But so, you know, we would definitely not recommend having the utility do it. So then we go back to the other spreadsheet, which is the breakdown of the bids, which is a little bit updated. Like I mentioned, we had Real Term come back with an additional fixture type so that we had a better comparison. It was close, very close to the bottom end. You see 345 as the lower end of their bid. I want to say the other one was 350. It was within $10,000 of that one, which makes the total difference between the fixtures. $10,000, $20,000 total over the course of the project. Again, noting that if we went with GE fixtures with Real Term, it would be significantly more expensive. But that was not their recommendation in the bid. So all that is to say, we think either of the bidders is perfectly qualified to do the project, but that in our opinion, there were a few things that one of the bidders brought to light that to us demonstrates that they're looking at the project in a way that is more beneficial to us. So for example, when we met with Real Term in person, they recommended that we spend an extra $3 or $4 per fixture to update the fuses. And they said typically, they'll find that the fuse will blow before the fixture, and then you have to send crews back out to fix it. So it will end up being more expensive in the long run than to just replace it while they already have someone there. They also said when they are changing the fixtures, if they encounter bad wiring, they will fix it then there to ensure that the fixture reaches the lifespan that they're predicting. In Tango's RFP, sort of buried in a footnote was a caveat that they were not responsible for bad wiring or fixtures. So that would be one example. The other was, as I've mentioned, Tango has a relationship with GE. They did not let us know that. We had asked them for a sample RFP, which is what we based our RFP on. And thankfully, someone at CCM had read our RFP, noticed that the RFP requested quotes on GE fixtures, which would obviously give Tango an advantage, and recommend that we include GE or similar brands, which, you know, allowed the other bidders to look competitive. They didn't mention to us. If CCM hadn't mentioned it to us, you know, I don't know where we would be. So because of that, Tony and I sort of feel more comfortable with Real Term. They mentioned driving around here at night, the night before our meeting, to look at our lighting levels. They just seem very proactive, and they seem to be approaching the project from a holistic point of view. That being said, again, they have leave one project that they currently have secured the contract for in Connecticut. And it was Watertown, and we believe it's on hold now because Eversource contacted Watertown, so. That, and then again, if you guys wanted to go with GE fixtures, Tango does have the relationship with the distributor for GE, so.
Yeah, with regard to the, you know, you mentioned the fuses issue and the wiring. The fuses, you said, is gonna be a few dollars each fixture to replace. I get that. The wiring, is that just included or is that an additional cost?
I think it would be an additional cost.
It would be additional cost.
Yeah.
Any idea, maybe Tony can answer this question. What are our, what does the current wiring look like right now? I mean, do we have old streetlight wiring, and they're gonna have to replace every one? Yeah, but what's the lights, I mean, I have no concept of what it
No, we don't, we don't own the lights.
I mean, it's not, it is what it is. I mean, they're, I'm just curious as far as the cost is concerned.
Well, it's only about five grand, right? And we have about 1,100 lights, $4 or $5 each to do the, redo the fusing?
Oh, for the fuses, yeah, for the wiring. I don't know what that would cost, but
Okay, so they didn't give you really an idea of what
No, but, so what struck me about it was the fact that when we went out to bid, we were also asking about maintenance services going forward. So the fact that Real Term bid on, you know, they want to bid on the maintenance services, but they also point out things that would increase service calls and that sort of thing ahead of time.
It makes you more comfortable with it, yeah, sure. I get that.
Whereas, you know, a footnote in Tango's RFP sort of briefly mentioned it.
Tango has a number of contracts in Connecticut right now?
They have a lot, yeah.
They have a lot. Watertown, I mean, Real Term has a contract in Connecticut. I think you had mentioned earlier in the meeting that they have many in other states.
Yeah, there were a lot in Massachusetts. There, I think they were originally Canada-based firms, so they have a ton up in Canada as well.
Where are we with regard to this project? Are we, are we looking to make a decision tonight, or is this?
If the board's comfortable.
I mean, I said from the get-go, I think this is a slam dunk, and this is a great, a great move. I just, you know, obviously, the details with regard to, you know, what the actual cost is gonna be. It'd be great to hear what a more finalized number is. I mean, are these basically finalized numbers, putting the wiring aside?
I think basically that the proposals that came back is they looked at our current streetlight inventory. They sort of just swapped that out. I mean, in that one larger spreadsheet, you see the range of fixtures that we have. So I think they kind of just went, well, normally, we would replace this with this. That doesn't take into account design factors. I mean, some of them mentioned, you obviously want to be careful with a hill-type situation so that the light isn't going directly into the driver's eyes. You know, there's design considerations that I'm sure aren't factored in because they didn't go around and look at everything. They haven't done their photometric analysis. And that also would not include, you know, for Real Term, the fuses and wiring that would need to be replaced.
What do we have budgeted for this right now?
There is no budget at this point, because we haven't determined how we're going to finance it.
Okay.
Now, if you look at the unaudited surplus, if that stays at $520,000, we have the ability to basically pay for it in cash. Not a surplus.
I'm pretty, pretty happy with it. I mean, obviously, there's, there's gonna be a fluctuation, you know, with the cost, depending on some of the things you mentioned, but there's no way of knowing that for sure until they actually do the project anyway, so.
And Tony just mentioned that part of the RFP required 10-year warranties on all the fixtures, so. The wiring is not covered under warranty, hence, you know, service costs would be required.
We're just unclear again. What's the average annual savings?
Both of them quoted somewhere in the neighborhood of $130,000, and that includes the rate change. Not the energy savings or something like $50,000, but the majority of our current streetlight bill is because of the rate, because we pay Eversource to basically maintain the lights for us.
Right. I just want to make sure I had that number straight in my head. I'm sure people are curious about that.
And, you know, and to that point, we could use that savings to finance the project if we wanted to. But, you know, with the large surplus like we have, we can provide direct mill rate relief or tax relief to the residents in year one.
Yeah, we requested cash positive financing options as part of the RFP, so.
You know, from my perspective, I think what I'm looking for is a decision on the company. So that way, myself, Rory, and Tony can sit down with either Tango or Real Term and kind of dig into the minutia of what it would be and start getting some hard numbers and things like that. So if the board is comfortable, I think that's what I'd be looking for, Rich, unless you want to add something to that, or?
And I will say, solid numbers will not be possible until the audit phase is complete. That's how, that's how they know what they're working with.
So I guess
And again, for any, oh, sorry, for any financing, it's gotta come back to the Board of Select and Board of Finance as well. And because of the size of probably town meeting as well.
What do you need from us tonight? You need approval to go and talk with a specific company? Do you want us to say, hey, we like this one better than the other?
I would like, I guess, the board's consensus as to which company you'd like us to move forward with, and then we can start that, that process.
It was Real Term that was doing Watertown?
Yes.
And they've done many projects that are completed in Massachusetts, you said?
Yeah.
Have you talked to any of those towns?
We reached out to a couple, and, you know, everybody likes the project, and it was executed.
Is there anybody far into the, like, five years into, it's the longest?
Due to the
Newness of it.
Yeah, that's kind of the difficult part.
But they didn't say anything to you that would dissuade you from using
Real Term.
Real Term or Tango?
No, Tango's clients were very positive as well. So we, we think both of the companies are
So you've done your diligence with both companies, but you and Tony feel that Real Term, if you had to decide, you would go with Real Term. You're more comfortable with them. You like their approach.
Yeah.
You think they're more customer service-oriented and more proactive, is what I've heard.
Not, don't seem to be hiding anything, you know.
Just out of curiosity, this is kind of outside the realm of this, but are both companies going to be using the town energy efficiency savings here as part of some kind of a larger bid into the energy efficiency programs at a regional level?
I mean, part of the proposals, and I think one of the spreadsheets, is they calculated the rebates that are available. We're requiring them to do all the paperwork, but it's built into the rebates were built into the project cost numbers, so it doesn't seem like they're taking in a bit for themselves. I don't know about on a regional level.
No, I was just curious. Okay, thank you. I'm, to answer your question, I'm uncomfortable.
Who else has questions, comments, concerns, thoughts? So, Rich, do we need a motion per se at this point, or just the board's consensus that Doug, Tony, or excuse me, Rory, Tony, and myself can start a little bit more in-depth? that Doug, Tony, or excuse me, Rory, Tony and myself can start a little bit more in-depth negotiations or conversations with Real Term, knowing that we still have to bring the final package, for lack of a better term, back to the board for approval? Okay, so I'll entertain that motion presented by Town Council. Motion by Al, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Tony and Rory, thank you very much for your hard work and effort.
Thank you.
To date. And I'm sure we'll have a lot more, but Rory's been pushing this ball for about seven or eight months now, so. Okay, so what we'll do then is we'll give them a call tomorrow. We'll set up some time, we'll start having those discussions with Real Term, and then we'll get back with the board within a couple of weeks. Excellent. All right, item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding hiring of Public Works employees. You have two letters in your packets. I want to refer you first to the letter dated September 12, 2016, to the Board of Public Works from Tony Di Primo, Director of Public Works, regarding full-time employment recommendations. In an effort to fill vacancies within the Department of Public Works, I am making recommendations to the Board of Public Works to hire current seasonal part-time employees. Al, I never say Al B. his name right, Al Pietro, Simone and Jack Macy to full-time employment, compliant with town policy and ask-me bargaining unit agreement. Mr. Simone and Mr. Macy have demonstrated good work practices during their time of seasonal employment and are experienced regarding the day-to-day operations. Having said vacancies filled will be advantageous to departmental planning and job assignments. In advance, thank you for your consideration. So that was Tony Di Primo's letter to the Board of Public Works. And then on top of that is a letter to this board from Sean Walsh, who is the Chairman of the Board of Public Works. Says pursuant to the recommendations in the attached letter, the Board of Public Works voted unanimously to bypass the interview process and recommend to you to extend offers of full-time employment to seasonal employees, Al Pietro, Simone and Jack Macy pending an updated background check and drug screening. Both employees have been in their roles of seasonal help for multiple years. As in the past, we voted to bypass the interview process because they're qualified, because they are qualified internal candidates, excuse me. We further recommend their hiring dates be staggered by one day, with Mr. Pietro, Simone first to mimic their seasonal staff hire dates and eliminate any potential future issues regarding seniority. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns. Sincerely, Sean Walsh. Sean's not here tonight. I don't believe he's feeling well today, but, okay. So with that being said, I like to use Monday, October 10th, for Al Pietro, Simone. That's okay. Uh, let's, let's say the 11th then. And then 10, 12 will be Jack. Jack's actually in the back, say hi, Jack.
Hi, Jack.
Okay, so, Rich, any, just, just one set motion and, okay. All right, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion that the Town of Seymour offer full-time laborers' class employment as recommended by Public Works Director Tony Di Primo and Public Works Board Chairman Sean Walsh to Al Pietro, Simone, effective Tuesday, October 10th, and to Jack Macy, effective Wednesday, October 12th. Tuesday, Z-Eleb, yes, Tuesday, Z-Eleb. Motion by Al, second by Len. Just under discussion, again, we've used this process in the past. We've had the seasonal employees, we see the type of work that they do. And then when an opportunity arises, this is how we've hired, I believe, our last four or five employees, if I'm not mistaken, through Public Works. I expect that there will be two or three more hires in the next month or so as well, as we continue to fill more spaces available. Again, these positions for the time being will be laborer-class with the potential of one or more potentially moving up to driver-class, just depending on how the numbers shake out. So any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Jack officially welcome aboard. Rory, can you give a note to Michelle so she can start the official background checks? Or I should, oh, yeah, background checks, drug screens, which both Jack and Al have been through already anyway, but. Item number nine, discussion, and take possible action regarding naming of Silvermine Industrial Park. I don't see Fred, but we'll put the resolution out there and then we can have further discussion. So this resolution comes from the Board, excuse me, the Economic Development Commission, and Fred Masur, Economic Development Director. And the resolution was put together by Town Special Counsel Fred Stanek. Says whereas the Town of Seymour implemented the development of the Silvermine Industrial Park Plan in 1979 to promote business growth and create jobs, and whereas, the Silver, speaking of the devil, and whereas the Silvermine Industrial Park has over the last three and one-half decades developed into a successful and robust campus that has attracted some of the Town of Seymour's largest employers and businesses, which market their services and products nationally and internationally, and whereas many, if not most, of the businesses located in the Silvermine Industrial Park are marketing?
Yeah, no, it's okay, feel better. It's okay, it's okay, feel better.
Let me start over. Whereas if not most of the businesses located in the Silvermine Industrial Park are marketing products and services which are high-tech in nature and/or utilize modern technology in their development and production, and whereas the Town of Seymour is desirous to rename the Silvermine Industrial Park so that the name of the area is inclusive and indicative of the modern technology products and services produced by and utilized by the businesses of the area, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Seymour, for the foregoing reason, for foregoing reasons, excuse me, does hereby name, rename the area known as the Silvermine Industrial Park as the Silvermine Technology Campus. So that is the resolution as created by Town Council Stanek. So what's everyone's thoughts on this? And then we'll kind of take it from there.
I think it's a good idea.
I like to name it after Gary, but that joke's no good, since Karen has left. So, but in her honor, we will, we'll throw, we'll throw Gary out there just for Karen. You know, the only thing I was thinking, I like Silvermine Technology Park. I think we have some great companies up there that are campus, excuse me, that are kind of on the cutting edge with what they do, you know, Basement Systems, MPI, just to name a few. I was wondering if we should add Commerce as well. That's my only thought, but, again, it's up to the group, what everyone would like to do. And Commerce Campus, I don't know if that's too wordy.
I'm not thrilled with Campus, but I think, I think it's better than Industrial Park, but.
Well, I like Silvermine Technology.
Well, I think it would be Silvermine Commerce and Technology Park, Commerce and Technology Campus. Like Park? Len? He had a lot to say on the lights, huh? Did we wear you, did we wear you out?
Nothing on Silvermine.
Did we wear you out?
Crickets.
That's right.
Crickets.
What about Commerce? Or do you just like Technology?
I guess, I mean, yeah, it's, it's better than what we have. So I think either way, it would be an improvement, given the fact that industry is, is not necessarily attracting Silvermore more similar than what we have now.
I think if you look at some of the, you know, you have, Haynes has their headquarters up there. I wouldn't exactly call them Technology. Gisperi is up there. They're not necessarily Technology, they're more Commerce, so. There's Andy's, Andy's Bounce Barn.
That's not Technology.
That's definitely not Technology. Yeah, so, actually, no, the daycare center moved. Yeah, they're down off Route Route 67.
Business Park, Silvermine Business Park.
We can do Business, we can do...
I'm fine, I'm fine with Commerce and Technology, I think it's all encompassing and more appropriate for the type of businesses that are in Connecticut.
Commerce and Technology, Anne Marie, you?
I'm with that.
Al? Okay. You like Business?
I like Business Park, but whatever, I'm fine with what everybody wants, so.
Will Technology and Commerce ever go out of style, so to speak?
I don't think so.
By those generic enough terms to?
I think so.
Commit signage to.
Well, we just put the, we had the new signs were put up last year, so we'll have to have new signs made.
Great.
That's okay. Those, that, that, those two signs were actually donated by Larry Janeski. And we've had conversations with Larry about the changing of the name and he supports it, so. All right, so Silvermine Commerce and Technology? Rich, would you like to weigh in? Technology Park. Tony, any thoughts from you?
Anybody.
Tony's okay with it as well? Silvermine Commerce and Technology Park. So I'll reread, do I need to reread the whole resolution or just the now therefore? Okay. So now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Seymour, for the foregoing reasons, does hereby rename the area known as Silvermine Industrial Park as the Silvermine Commerce and Technology Park. So can I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented? Motion by Anne Marie, second by Len. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero. Lena, can you just mark for the record that Karen left at 7:38, please? Okay, just so we have it on the record. Excellent, thank you very much. Rory, can you get, with Fred, so we can get a letter out to all the businesses just to let them know the name change? Okay. What did I do wrong here? Uh, item. Just bear with me a second, I missed. Sorry, I'm out of order. This is number nine. I'm missing the Plan of Conservation and Development sheet. Rory, you put that in the packet, did you not? I remember seeing it.
Is it just a letter?
Oh, it was for something else? Okay. All right, so item number 10, discussion, take possible action regarding endorsement of 2016 Plan of Conservation and Development. So Rory, where do we stand with this? Just give the board a quick update.
The plan was officially adopted by Planning and Zoning on September 8th. We sent a letter to OPM Secretary Barnes.
Which is in your packets.
To update the state's inventory of planning and conservation so that we're now eligible for discretionary funding. This is just because the state statute is a little bit vague and the planners recommended that the board just endorse the plan as well to, to cover our bases, but we should be good, should be all set, adopted, good to go.
Thank you, Rory. Okay, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen endorse. Is that a proper term, Rich? Endorse the 2016 Plan of Conservation and Development adopted by? Okay. So entertain a motion to endorse and improve, approve, excuse me, the 2016 Plan of Conservation and Development as presented by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Motion by Len, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero. Item number 11, discussion, take possible action regarding 2016 EMPG Grant Application. In your packets, you have a certification, and I will read the resolution part. That will in turn be, also certified, excuse me, by Susan DeBarber, our town clerk. Says resolve that the Board of Selectmen may inter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, and any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and further resolve that W. Kurt Miller is the first Selectman of the Town of Seymour, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. So can I have a motion to accept the authorizing resolution as presented? Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Again, just under discussion, this will be forwarded to Mrs. DeBarber, who will certify and send this on to, to Deep. Okay, hearing none, other questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero. Okay, item number 12 is appointments. We have a few appointments for this evening. First appointment, Joe Nazelski, Planning and Zoning Commission alternate. It's a new appointment, it's a two-year term, it expires 12/1 of 2017. Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero. Lisa Chaney, Culture and Arts Commission, it's a new appointment, it's a three-year term. It expires 9/20/2019. Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero. Judy Simpson, Culture and Arts Commission, reappointment, it's a three-year term. It expires 10/4/2019. Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero. Ann Conroy, Culture and Arts Commission, it's a reappointment, it's a three-year term. It expires 10/4/2019. Motion by Nicole, second by Len. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero. Item number 13, tax refunds and abatements, we have two before us this evening. First one will be dated September 15, 2016.
The following overpayments of tax payments in total of $504.95 need to be approved for refund in accordance with provisions of Section 12-129 of the Connecticut General Statutes, dated at Seymour the 15th day of September 2016, Dana Flock Tax Office.
Thank you, Nicole. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the tax collector's report from September 15, 2016, as presented. Motion by Al, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero. Nicole?
The following overpayments of tax payments in total of $964.16 need to be approved for refund in accordance with provisions of Section 12-129 of the Connecticut General Statutes, dated at Seymour the 30th day of September 2016, Dana Flock Tax Office.
Thank you, Nicole. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the tax collector's September 30, 2016, report as presented. Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five-zero. Next item on the agenda, item number... Next item on the agenda, item number 13, or excuse me, item number 14, I apologize, transfers. We have two transfers before us, both having to do with projects that this board has already approved. I took them to the Board of Finance last week to make sure that we had the Board of Finance's approval, and so it now needs to go through us. Once that is done, then we can get the process, these projects going. The first one is control number one. It's the amount of $15,415. That amount will be coming out of fund balance, and it will be going into roads for paving, and you can see down on the description, transfer for paving, parking lot behind the community center. The quoted cost for the project is $97,896, and the allotted capital budget was $82,483. The difference is the amount of the transfer. If you go to the summary that was put together by A&amp;J Construction, and we will be going out to bid on this, the reason we were off was because of the hydraulic separator allowance and the installed hydrodynamic separator that needed to be added based on the town's ordinances for inland wetlands. So that amount was not taken into account when we had initially put the quotes together when I had initially spoken to you. That's the reason why we are outside of budget, so I brought this to the Board of Finance to make sure that they were comfortable with using the money from fund balance. And again, our fund balance is projected to be over $520,000, as I mentioned earlier. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve transfer control item number one, in the amount of $15,415, being moved from fund balance to roads paving. Motion by Len, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion?
One of the two hydraulic separator, what is that?
It's a flux capacitor.
Yeah, it's a flux capacitor. Makes the, makes the sky glow. It has to do with our wastewater management.
And whose error was that on picking, not picking that up?
I would guess mine and Don Smith's. But Don Smith is the one that actually had the conversation with A&amp;J about adding it into the quote, so. I mean, I guess I can take the blame for it, but I wouldn't have known about it in the first place, so.
Thank you.
Any questions on that? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next item is control number two. It's in the amount of $16,925. Again, it will be coming out of fund balance, and will also be going to roads paving, and under the detailed explanation, transfers for downtown paving work in town hall parking lot, the remaining funds for the bonded road project is $550,000, and the quoted remaining project cost is $566,925. The difference is the amount of the transfer. And again, if you remember when we talked initially about doing the work downtown, we had looked at having the town hall parking lot completely redone while we have the equipment down here, we're coming up about $16,900 short to have that work completed. So again, we're asking for that amount to have those projects completed. If you look to the detail that is attached, you can see the breakdown, and again, you've all seen this, this breakdown before. You know, if anything changes, money that is not used will just fall right back to, to the bottom line. So that'll entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve control item number two, in the amount of $16,925, money being moved from fund balance to roads paving. Motion by Len, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Roy, can you reach out to Don and Brian tomorrow? Let them know they can get, get the bids going? Okay, correspondence, we have a stack of correspondence tonight, so we will go through that slowly. We have a legal opinion from Town Council to the Board of Finance and to the Planning and Zoning Commission with regards to the seating of alternates. There had been some confusion, and Rich was asked to clarify that, so we have an understanding. There is a letter to the State of Connecticut Department of Housing from Rich on behalf of the town. There is a letter to David Corbett, who is an investigator for the Office of Civil Rights in New England Region, from Rich, with regards to a complaint that was filed by Joseph Luciano pertaining to the Seymour Senior Center, and there's a packet of information contained also. We have a letter from John Asford, who is the chairman of the Board of Directors for the Connecticut Hurricanes, just thanking the town of Seymour, and just expressing his appreciation for being a part of, of the town. There is an email, which was sent to me by Christopher Adamo, who is the chairman of the Lights Committee up at the high school, which I forwarded to Rory for inclusion in your packets, inviting everyone to the ribbon cutting, I guess, for lack of a better term, next Monday, October 10th, 5:30, up at the high school for the lights, for they officially to be turned on. There is the September, or excuse me, the August 2016 Accomplishments of Productivity Report that Tony DiPrimo, our Director of Public Works, sends to Tony Cicerda, our Director of Operations. There is a resignation letter from Susan Lysinski from the Zoning Board of Appeals due to conflicts with her work and home life schedule. And then a letter that I sent this week to VEMS to reappoint myself as the representative to the town of Seymour on the Valley EMS Board of Directors. So that closes correspondence. Okay, with that, we'll move to item number 16, public comment. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Asking one last time, is there any public comment? Hearing no public comment, we will go to Selectmen's public comment. Nicole?
I was honored to attend the Pumpkin Festival, our 51st annual Pumpkin Festival. It was a great time had by all. We were able to, I was able to work at the Republican Town Committee grilled cheese selling booth, and that was a ton of fun. We had some laughs and sold a lot of grilled cheese. Our first selectman, Miller, was our quality control specialist, and.
He had a lot of grilled cheese.
Apparently, he was only supposed to have one grilled cheese for every hundred sold, but it ended up being one for every two or three sold, but.
Go wrong with a grilled cheese.
No one got sick, so it was, it was a great time had by all. And I was also honored to attend the Seymour Pink 5K walk run for breast cancer. I was on Team Theodorable in honor of my mom, who's a breast cancer survivor. We all had a great time. And Mary Demming has done, once again, a phenomenal job with her board and staff. They just can't do it. This is nationally known as such a great event, and it's great to see all the, the breast cancer and cancer survivors and banners hanging around town. It's just people call me from all over saying, I can't believe your town does this, it's nice. We had the pink road, the breast cancer ribbons were painted. Public Works, once again, did a great job with everything. And that was it, and hopefully next year it can be even bigger.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Al?
Just to echo Nicole's comments, the Pink 5K was a lot of fun, as usual. It's a really great event for our community, and it's good to see Seymour kind of rally the Valley towns around survivors of cancer. Mary Demming's reaction when you showed her that check was just, that was worth the whole, the whole day. And just to, just to say, you know, we pushed and Kurt waved, so.
That's what he does.
That's what I want to say. That's it.
I fundraised, they pushed. Anne Marie?
Just to comment again on Nicole and Al's thing, it was great to see that community come together as one, you know, one group writing one day, all both agrees, and it was great to see it in the papers and on the news and everything like that. I did serve the Pumpkin Fest with Nicole, and I have to use Nicole, it was one for every four sold. There was one bacon one, and one tomato one, and one work one, and.
They liked the works one, those are the best. Tomato and bacon.
I did like how the public works didn't line with the pink going down the middle.
Yep.
And you know how we all are on social media nowadays? I saw one with the yellow line with the blue in the middle of it, and I just thought that would be a nice thing to do as well.
We're looking at doing that over on, call me up. Thank, no. Franklin, Franklin Street. Yes. So Tony DiPrimo's looking into the paint and what we need to do to have that done.
Awesome.
But that was going to be a surprise to the police officer, so I guess that's out. So if.
There we go.
Lena and Jean, if you could forget that that wasn't sad, because I'm sure none of them are going to watch the video. So if you guys can just put your pens through that part.
Aren't you glad it came back there, Jean? Surprise!
All 100 video viewers.
Yeah.
Regarding catch basins and storm drains and the cleaning of that, I feel that, you know, as a Board of Public Works member, as well as in the environmental professional I can, I can speak to, we as a community have a storm water pollution plan, and in the plan it states when our catch basins have to be cleaned, and they do have to check them, and they do have to be pumped out when there's a certain amount of soil that gets inside of them. But I will be checking on that with Tony DiPrimo, and I'll be very closely looking on that matter.
Yeah, we do about $10,000 worth of catch basins each year.
Yeah.
So.
It says which ones we have to pump out, because there's certain ones that need to serious.
Yeah, we do between 400 and 500 a year. Okay, Len?
Yeah, I'll just add, my sentiments with regard to the Seymour Pink event, it was a heck of an event, and, you know, not to say what's already been said, but I would like to point out that in addition to, you know, a heck of a job by Public Works, the EMS Fire Department and the police department did an incredible job. As I understand it, I think there was one person who needed, needed medical services during the, during the race. It was not Kurt, he was pushing the mirror on the car.
I got a.
While Al, Stefan, and I were in the back doing the bulk of the work the entire time. But, but he did the yeoman's job of fundraising, as did our fire chief, Mike Lombardi, who I wanted to thank. God bless him, he wore full turnout gear, 85 pounds worth of gear for the entire five kilometers, to raise an additional $2,000, which he was successful in doing, so.
That was something.
You know, that's, that's dedication, and obviously, everybody who participated, both from our community and elsewhere around the state, and apparently in other states as well. I don't know what, what Mrs. Demming said the final number was, but it was.
10 states.
It was well over what she had, she had anticipated as, as her goal, and.
Oh.
Proof positive that we, we do a pretty good job in Seymour.
I believe she hit 63,000.
And her goal was.
60.
60. So we, so we did, we helped do that, and Mrs. Demming has always, not only made it a heck of an event, but she made it entertaining while she was cheering us on and announcing the winners and everything else, so, you know, great day, so. On to next year. We're not pushing a car next year, we're doing something else.
Yeah.
If we're pushing a car next year, you're, you're in the.
Or a monster truck.
No, I mean, we're already working on next year's ridiculous idea. Alex Dank is already in pole swing, so. He said something about giant tractor tires or something? That, yeah, we, yeah, I, he's completely. He's completely. Did you see that movie with Adam Sandler where they get in? Guy goes taking off downtown? Now it'll be Bruno. We'll launch Bruno right down, right down Turge Street. We'll find him somewhere in Oxford. Yeah, that'll be fantastic. That's right. Al's going to hurt alpacas. Rich, anything you'd like to? Yeah, thank you, thank you. Roy, anything we've missed?
No charge.
No? All right, I have no additional comments, so with that. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Mark the meeting closed at 8:06 PM. Thank you very much, everyone.